Well, we'll go ahead and kick it off then. We've got the August sixth work session going on here tonight. We've got our friends from the Ottawa Group that are here to present the strategic plan draft. So I think these folks have a presentation for us this evening. I think to start, we'll go ahead and just go around really quickly and do some quick introductions. So if you want to kick it off.
Sarah Moss on behalf of the Ottawa Group.
Sarah Miller, Ottawa Group.
Lisa Van Reden Duck with Ottawa Group.
Lowery Meyer, Town of Wellington.
Dave Wiegand, Town of Wellington.
Ed Kennedy.
Ryan Mason, Town of Wellington.
Rebecca Bailey, Trustee, Town of Wellington.
Patty Garcia, Town Administrator.
Nick Reed, Finance Director.
Megan Smith, Public Works Deputy Director.
Bob Galloway, I'm Public Works Director.
Cody Bird, Planning Director.
Ross O'Janas, Public Library Director.
Ethan Moose, Clerk.
Dan Saffianza, Town Attorney.
Thanks, Dan.
Glad to be here.
And Sherelle Teats.
Trustee Teats, can you hear us right on her?
I can.
Cool. So yeah. Okay, sounds great. Awesome. So yeah, these guys have a presentation that they're gonna present with us tonight. My understanding is that you guys were provided some questions that were asked by the trustees. So hopefully we can go over some of those while we go here. But I think I think I'll probably ask that we try to hold questions to the end so that these folks can get through the presentation. And then we'll figure out if there are questions from the board.
Hey, Brian, do you mind if I lead in a little bit?
Absolutely.
Your history? Okay, thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt. But over the past several election cycles, the Board of Trustees has worked on updating the Town of Wellington mission, vision and mission, along with creating a strategic plan. The 2020-2022 Plan captures intentional growth and development, sustainable infrastructure, community engagement and organizational strength. The next plan for 22 to 2024 included fiscal responsibility, infrastructure, planning and development and communication. The next proposed plan includes some of those past ideas and also brings some new strategic areas, which is reflective of the growth and needs of the town and the residents and the vision of the Board of Trustees. We've been really fortunate to have the Ottawa Group lead the board through the strategic planning process. It has been really a great process. So I appreciate everything you've put into this. I'm excited to hear from the trustees and their thoughts on the draft document. And I will turn it over to the Ottawa Group, whoever wants to start.
Thanks. I'll just start really quickly. We have about forty, we think is about a forty, forty-five minute presentation. We are in receipt of the feedback and any questions from from those of you. So we'll be incorporating some comments throughout our presentation. And I'm going to, just happy to be here to present this draft plan to you. We will be taking this information that we hear from you today and working with Patty to give you your document that you need for your meeting, I think, in a week, right? Great. So I'll let, turn, next slide, please. So just for some of you, all of you in the room have met us, but there's some folks on the phone. So we want to make sure everybody knows who we are. We're headquartered in Pine, Colorado, right in the Park County area. We get our name from this book, The Woman at Ottawa Crossing, that is a story of a small woman-owned tea room, which is often used as a nexus where people gather to discuss complex issues. Our services include organizational development, program development, and implementation and community and stakeholder engagement. And we build custom teams, which we built this team, the three of us that have been working with you over the past few weeks, to support you in your journey and developing your strategic plan. I'd like to turn the floor over to Sarah.
Hi again, everyone. For those of you who haven't met yet, I'm Sarah Moss, a partner often with Sarah Miller and Lisa. I like to describe my job as civic dreaming and doing. And it's been a pleasure to be able to dream and help you make a plan to do for the Town of Wellington. My background is local, state and federal government previously. And now I consult on process improvement, public education campaigns and PR, storytelling and public speaking, and all of that gets wrapped into strategic planning as well. I also teach at the C U Denver School of Public Affairs Certified Public Manager Program, where I work closely with Lisa Van Reden Duck. And Lisa, I'll turn it over to you to introduce yourself.
Thanks. So Lisa Van Reden Duck, I come to the Ottawa Group through my work at the School of Public Affairs at the University of Colorado Denver. So our school has a thirty-plus-year history of consulting with nonprofits and governments. In addition to our role in training what we hope is a terrific workforce to work in nonprofits and governments in our state, in our region, and love doing this kind of work in partnership with other folks outside of the university. So I would say for us in this team, just reiterating how fun it's been to work with you all and the energy that you brought and the tough questions and the really staying engaged in the conversations with each other has been really a delight to watch and to participate in. So hopefully today and next week will be a bit of a conglomeration of the really hard work that you all have put into thinking about the future of your town together.
Next slide. So we bring up this slide because these are what drives us at Ottawa Group. And we're just very excited. We were reflecting on this earlier before we came here, that you all exercised all four of these things with us. So we were very excited. You got creative, you got to learning, you focused in on your service and your and your commitment to your community. So I just wanted to highlight that that it hit us right in our heart and we're able to hopefully bring something forward for you. Next slide, please. So we're gonna, tonight, we are gonna be working with you all to go through an overview of the strategic planning process, especially for the folks that might be joining us that haven't heard what this process looks like. So we'll go over that. We will also review next steps and recommendations and discuss the draft vision statement. So I was gonna be doing a little bit of work tonight to review those vision statements. And Sarah Moss is gonna talk, get us started on talking about our methods and how we designed the process. So next slide, please. Thanks.
We first started off with several conversations with your wonderful Town Administrator and Deputy Administrator to get some background, figure out who we wanted to talk to in an interview process, what documents we should read, and just really trying to get a sense of the community and the town government. First thing we did was dive into citizen perspectives through your National Community Survey conducted by NRC Poll Co. that was done last year through the community engagement that the staff put on in March. We reviewed every single response to those sessions. And then we even tried to join some of the local media channels, local social media channels, watched some meetings, looked at some events to really get a sense of what was going on. After that, really trying to understand the resident perspective, we started talking to our town leadership here, talking one-on-one with elected officials, with the senior leadership of the town. In total, we did twenty-two interviews where we asked each person, what are your dreams for Wellington five years, fifteen years from now? What are the challenges you see? How do you see your role in that? And what opportunities are there? Overwhelmingly, we heard some similar themes, and we'll get to that in just a second. But our next step then was to dive into what plans do you have already here in Wellington? We spent a lot of time reading a lot of documents from your comprehensive plan to water, wastewater plan. Sorry, that's neat. Parks and Trails, the downtown plan. We looked at the market analysis and leakage reports that you had commissioned. We read last year's budget and the capital improvement plan. So we had a sense of what are you already talking about? And when we were to bring all of you together in a round to represent those resident perspectives that you get every day in your interaction through your jobs and your services and elected official and in the plans that you're already working on, the way you've already allocated resources, how did that all come together? Next slide, please. Overwhelmingly, you all said the same thing in your interviews. You said the same thing that we heard from the residents in the surveys and community engagement summaries that we reviewed. This is a place people love. This is a place with a lot of opportunity. This is a place with a strong sense of community. And every single one of you mentioned pride in your Fourth of July celebration. Next slide, please. So for two sessions, we worked with town leadership to start dreaming and start coming together on what is the vision for the town the next five years. We talked about some longer-term goals. And in that, in those cases, we encouraged folks to shrink the change a little bit and think about what could you do in the next five years to put you on a path towards longer goals. We talked a lot about levels of governance and levels of strategy and that the role of a strategic plan is to be very high level. And that later, the implementation plan and the budget will be the how do we get it done? But the role of the strategic plan is the more high level. What is it we want to accomplish together? Next slide, please. So where you are today, where you want to be five years from now is what you're talking about in the strategic plan. How you get there, the implementation is something that the staff will come back to you on at a later time. They have an incredible amount of expertise in the staff of this town. Amazing education, amazing professional memberships. We were really impressed in talking to the staff and understanding the networks that they're a part of and their past work histories. They come from some really accomplished backgrounds. And we're excited to see what the staff does when this plan gets handed them to run with it. Next slide, please. So diving into what is this plan actually going to say? The first thing we started with was reviewing your existing town mission. Excuse me, vision. And you all decided to make some changes to it. During our in-person sessions, you did some wordsmithing, some brainstorming. We put up some activities on the wall that were sort of like magnetic poetry or Mad Libs. And some of you decided you wanted to continue to do some work on that. So we appreciate the two trustees that worked on that after the session. What they've come up with is two options, how are you, that are in your packets and here on the screen. After the presentation, we'll come back to this and Sarah Miller will facilitate a discussion to help you come to some consensus on this. Next slide, please. You did come to consensus on your mission statement, which is to provide outstanding municipal services for our community of today and tomorrow. So having any changes that we don't expect tonight. But we are open to discussion at the end of this. This is what will be in your plan for approval next week. Next slide, please.
All right. So I'm gonna take it from here to get us into some of the needs. And if you all remember, we talked about the sort of strategy level being the place where we wanted a plan to land. But knowing that our conversations would probably get into some of the tactical, operational levels, but that the idea was to roll those back up to the strategy level, where you might have an idea of what Sarah said about the how. And that's a way to conceptualize the larger strategy. And so it was great to have lots of conversations with you all to craft the concept. So I just want to remind us that where we've landed is at that top of the strategy level, your staff having conversations and pulling from many of your other plans where you've already outlined specific tactics and specific operational elements. Those pieces can be brought together in what we think is an umbrella in the strategic plan that aligns with the rest of the interests that you have. Because I like spreadsheets. I have in the background a little bit of just mapping the different plans to each other. And it was fun after we did this work to look and say like, no, this is reinforcing. And some of your staff knew that as it was happening. They're like, oop, I see that. That's something we've been talking about. This is a place for you to, you all to prioritize together. So let's go to the next slide. Patty, thanks for giving the intro about the past couple of strategic plans. Because one of the things that we noticed is that some of the larger categories in your past strategic plans felt a little bit like underlying foundational principles by which you might make all of your decisions, not just something that you would put in a strategic plan. So we proposed to you all, thinking about adding guiding principles to your whole plan, but then also to some of your decision-making processes. Certainly, this is something that you'll see a lot of other local governments also have kind of guiding principles. So you'll see fiscal responsibility here, potentially moving from being a strategic plan category to actually being a foundational element of how you make decisions. And as we were talking to all of you across trustees and staff, we knew that this was something that you were all valuing and exhibiting. So the guiding principles, if you remember, we had great conversation. I think we might have started with five. As a group, we ended up merging them into four. And so then I took the conversations that we had had, the notes that you would all had, and you kind of did some, it wasn't voting, it was just like, I like this, I have questions about this, kind of indications together, and have proposed for you some language that would be underneath these guiding principle titles. I think when I reflect back, I think accountability, relationships and fiscal responsibility were the three categories where there was a lot of agreement and synergy in the room about what we mean these three things to look like. And so the language here is very much, very much comes from the work together. And then, as you all know, we had such a great conversation about what it means to be community-engaged and community-driven and community-centered and community-focused. That was a big conversation, two whole groups and then you all together. And then we kind of left going, we know, we think we know what we mean here, but how do we say it really concisely in a way that can fit on a slide in this way? So this is one proposed way to, that is a conglomeration of the conversations we had about community-engaged and community-driven. So I'll just read these for us and then be thinking about if there's anything within these that, you know, in the future, you might want to change. I will say, our recommendation is that you kind of take some time on the communications team side of things to wordsmith these in a way that makes them sound like the town brand and like how you already talk about things, right? Right now, this feels a little bit like our language, we're gifting this to you and that you gotta take it and own it a little bit. And then I would say the second recommendation is to kind of like, start using them a little bit. So what does it mean to have a conversation about, like, you know, using fiscal responsibility as a decision? Making lens, a lens to look at decisions. So you'll have to do a little bit of work to figure out the right way to use these for you. This could be something too, that like having conversations with some of your colleagues and other towns and counties about how they use their guiding principles, if they do, that again, could just be learning from others and using this tool. So I'm gonna start with accountability and go around clockwise. We have accountability, creating effective feedback loops about achieving goals by being goal-driven, action-oriented, making well-informed decisions and communicating clearly and fully. This is the space where you talked about, we want to say what a strategy is, we want to talk about what the measures are, we want to want to come back to that conversation, were the, was that goal met? So that feedback loop, not meaning evaluation feedback, but like, here's what we're gonna do. Did we do it? How did it go? Is there something that has gotten in our way? Can we help get it out of the way? And that kind of loop of conversation. And then accountability is also the place where you all talked about the concept of transparency. I didn't put transparency here as a word. And here's why. Because it feels to us that right now you all don't have a real, strong collective agreed-upon definition of transparency. And what we heard you talking about was communicating clearly and fully, making well-informed decisions, being action-oriented. Those things sort of being within transparency. So if you would like to add transparency in this definition, the intention is there. I would just suggest first, you get really clear among yourselves, what does that mean? Right now, we think that communicating and clearly and fully hits that. Relationships, being a collaborative partner through mutual understanding, communication, honesty and respect. There was a lot of great conversations about what that means for you all to be partners in your community with other organizations, et cetera. Fiscal responsibility, this was a very clear definition from the team that created this definition. There was a lot of synergy here. Strictly complying with municipal financial standards and ensuring stable and predictable resources for sustainable municipal services. Stable and predictable resources. You all talked about, this isn't just money. This is the conversation of like broader resources, not just dollars and cents. And then community-centered, providing a safe space for all community members to share their perspectives. And we're really focused on that, all community members. Actively seeking underrepresented or missing voices to help inform decisions. This is that community-engaged piece that y'all got talking about. Like, we know that there might be some community members who are not being vocal with us, who are not connecting us for whatever reason. Let's seek them out and and ask for their engagement, invite them to engage with us. And then being intentional about seeking participation and ideas to move to action and achieve goals. You also were pretty clear about this has a purpose, right? We want to be community-centered so that this is tying into our action and goals. So you can share with us later your thoughts on these. I think this is the most for us that we feel like it's pretty, it's a draft that you all are gonna have to take forward and sort of turn into something that's your own. We will not take the time to manage that today. We felt like the vision, y'all really did a lot of ownership work and we can make a clear decision today for you to take forward next week. We think that this needs a little bit more work. Next slide, please. So our strategic directions, after all the conversations, the review of other plans, the thinking about what are some of the categories in which we want to nest the strategic and tactical and operational work? We came up with these four areas. A couple of things to remember about these areas, we talked about how they overlap a little bit. Certain things can fit in more than one category, that's okay. That they integrate with each other, but some of them are also foundational, right? So we think about ensuring town, strong town operations, that's gonna be a bit of a foundational side of things. Growing responsibly, we talked about a little bit of overarching, right? At some point, it's probably good enough to be able to move forward and make good decisions. Spending too much time noodling over your strategic plan can actually just detract. So be thoughtful about like how much time you want to spend, you know, thinking through changes that you want to make before you move forward and say like, this is enough for us to make some some strong decisions. So in each of these elements, remember, we talked about what are some of the tactics, we were like, what what's in here? And we together turned in our ideas into some larger categories in each of these areas. So we have proposed for you, you know, just about four to five areas where we think most of the work, really all the work that you have been talking about, what's in your other plans, kind of nest within. And again, this idea that sometimes the exact word isn't in this larger strategy, but we know what lives within it. So you go to the next slide and you'll see a great example of this is in grow responsibly. The fourth bullet, we have reinforce and align plans for corridors and jurisdiction boundaries. I-25 corridor is nested in this, right? That that is one of the interests that you have within this area. So be thinking about, we know that there's a topic of interest, some work that we want to be doing. Does it fit into some of these categories? Then even if you put forward another, cultivate and nurture community spaces. We did talk about town facilities here, but we really were also talking about what are the other places? Oh, we call them third spaces. Sometimes it's a business, right? That is a place where people can commune, convene. And when you were defining the meeting and gathering spaces, we were talking about this is sometimes where this particular strategy connects to the strategy of fostering economic vibrancy because you're talking about supporting a business that is also a place where people share community together. One of the places they're connected. We proposed the language of community center here. I think the Parks Plan might call out a recreation center. But as we were talking with you all, y'all kind of got a little sort of strategic thinking forward about maybe it's not only a recreation center, but exploring what might a center where that that is town-owned, that the community could use collectively. And you also got thoughtful about what already exists in the community. What would we not need to duplicate as a as a community, as the town? And so we left this one pretty broad as community center, with you all being able to do some more community engagement. Just look at the, the parks, you know, plan, that sort of thing to think about what the what the community center could look like. Next slide, please. Foster economic vibrancy. This was a great conversation where like lots of things we were saying could fit into this. And so it does, you know, infuse itself across. We did talk about, this is a little broader than economic development. We didn't want just to have economic development in this and thinking about a broader economic vibrancy. We talked about what does it mean for someone to be able to live, work and play in this community? Not have to leave for the work part, want to come here for the play part, even though the work happened somewhere else, right? Those kinds of things. So I do feel like this one, some of the bullets here, you've you've got some more defining to do, I think, in this area of like what the focuses are gonna be. And then the last one, if you give us one more, then thanks. Ensure towns, strong town operations. This one, as I mentioned, being maybe foundational. Also, one where if you all remember, as we were brainstorming in the other strategy areas, we started to pull some things over into ensure strong town operations. There were a couple of ideas about maybe different staff positions or different staff responsibilities that might support some of the other strategies. And if you remember, we moved all of them into this category and said, okay, let's talk about investing in retaining and hiring skilled staff that are, we are going to need in order to support the focus on the other areas. So I want to name that for us, Liz here. The communicating strategically to community audiences was, you know, something that was an entire strategic element in one of the past strategic plans. But here we're feeling like, you know, putting that in strong town operations so that it is foundational in all of your, all of your areas. And then I also wanted to call out the ensuring safety and security, including emergency response, was something that you all talked about, wanting to make sure that gets specifically called out and named in this plan. So that is one that is in here as well. I'm gonna stop there. Let's see. We have the visuals. So y'all know I like visuals. We started, one forward, one more for me, Ethan. You tried to pull all of these things together, the vision, the mission, the principles, and then the strategic areas. And the way that I ended up indicating this is sort of the arrow to the left-hand side of this visual shows the how these things are connected to each other. So you start with your big vision. I put in the draft, one of the two draft ones, I made some choices just for the draft plan visual, it says draft on there. So not making any decisions about that one yet. And then tying into, we accomplished this by our mission of providing outstanding municipal services for our community today and tomorrow, guided by the principles of community-centered fiscal responsibility, accountability and relationship. So even before you get to the strategy, you're going through this, like, why are we even here doing this? And we do this through these guiding principles. And now we're at the strategy level, right? And then the four categories of strategic areas. So certainly something that you could take with, what'll be in the, in the draft document if it's helpful to you. And then again, also something that the communications folks at the town can really turn into something that is your brand, if it is a useful visual for you. But just the idea of having a visual can be something that helps distill the past twenty-five minutes that I've been talking into something that someone can just look at, be like, okay, I get what's going on here. All right. So, um, our next steps, as you heard from Sarah, is that we'll talk through the vision today. We're hoping that you'll be able to leave today with a clear choice of which of the visions you'd like to go with, that we'll put into the final document ASAP, since we leave here, so that you all can have that for review and discussions. What we know is that the next step is for staff to take this and start to really line out for you. Like, what are some of the very specific goals in the next year, two years, three years, five years? What are some of the measures? What are some of the measures that that they might propose to you? Like, we could report on this particular item in the goals and you guys have a conversation about, we'd like to hear about this particular area. So you all have a lot of work to figure out implementation here. But hopefully we've given you a strong umbrella, a good conversation. That's a lot of strategic planning, it's like some agreement among you all, conversation about what you mean about these things in order for you to take it to the next level. I'm going to stop there and maybe Sarah, do you want to wrap up and then we'll go to questions or should?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's just go one more. Thanks. This is the document that you all had in your packet and it's available to the public through the packet. So we've, we've walked through the the details here and want to remind you around the the these pieces that Lisa's highlighted, we have recommendations, like, we recommend you do this, we think about this, especially in spaces of where there's a little bit more work to do. But I want to go to the next slide to remind us all of what is happening and talk about a little bit about just re reminding us about the best practices around strategy development and strategic plans. So tonight is the discussion about the draft documents that we have provided document. And then the, I think the intention is to adopt a final plan by by next week, understanding that there has to be some massaging and Wellingtonizing of it, okay? And so the the this document gives you a good, like, here we are, but it needs to become yours as far as the the final launch and some sort of a celebration, I would suggest, is exciting around that. And then you're going to be doing ongoing monitoring, so that's your role as a trustee. Staff, their role is to take all these things that you put together and then develop the action plans. That's where you start to get to the measurements, to the what, to relying on their professional expertise and connections and nooks and crannies that they know about and are responsible for monitoring and understanding and orchestrating that will then be bringing to you that implementation plan. So and then they will need to be doing some ongoing reporting to you as well. So you're monitoring their reporting. And then the trustees and staff together, we're going to suggest that you think about an annual retreat to review, refresh, recommit to the plan in some sort of a way that that you do that. And there's some methodology around that that we have shared with Patty and Kelly and will continue to do that. So let's go to the questions. Yes, yeah, before we get to vision, yeah. And then we're going to do some work on the vision, yeah.
Work session, right? We were told it was a work session.
Well, thank you guys for the presentation. I think you really distilled down, you know, a lot of the ideas that were in the room and so really appreciate you guys putting this all together. Trustee Dana, you want to start with the questions?
I don't have any questions. I think this is a wonderful summary of our conversations and it's a great groundwork for us to continue working. So thank you guys so much for.
Trustee Teets.
Yes, hello, this was fun to actually be a part of and participate in. Unfortunately, I had missed a day getting stuck in Chicago. So some of the additional items that were discussed related to guiding principles and some of the markers under the approach and current status, I was not able to give a lot of feedback on, but I did show up early and got a crash course. And Sarah did an amazing job giving me that crash course, so I'm grateful for her for doing that. I do have a few questions. One of them is related to, it goes to page four of nine, the community centered. The providing a safe space for all community members to share their perspectives, actively seeking underrepresented or missing voices. That one I would like us as trustees to kind of discuss a little bit more because it feels like we're segregating a specific population of the community related to voices, when I would like to hear everyone's. I mean statistically, we have three to five people that actually attend our meetings, showing a very good demonstration of how we need all the voices to help inform decisions. So that's one of the goal areas that I was hoping to discuss. The other one was related to, so that was the creating communities, the community center. Thank you for answering that question. I know I had sent that in a previous email. I think like you had said, these are some areas that us as trustees are going to have to discuss during this plan implementation. Other than that, I have no questions related to how it was drafted, just discussion points for us as trustees to kind of look at generalized ideas of how we define the things that are listed out in here. My question to Patty would be if we're adopting this next week, there's, it seems like there's a good amount of areas that still need to be provided feedback. Is that what this meeting is to tonight for, is to actually discuss all of the items?
Yes, that is the intent. Please, thank you.
Then I have no more questions right now.
Okay, thank you, trustee Teets. Trustee Moyer.
Um, I have no questions. I really appreciate the process and getting to work with everyone throughout the four days together. It was enlightening and really impactful, I think. I'm proud of what you guys put together for us. And I think that woven throughout is a lot of hope and bright possibilities. So I'm fine to discuss the all, but I think all says it all. And I don't, I don't really know. I just think it's it's a good plan and excited to work through it.
Thank you, trustee Moyer. Trustee Wiegand.
I agree with trustee Moyer. You guys put together a pretty amazing plan. I think it might need a little wordsmithing going through it, but you guys are a lot better than I am at that. So I hope so. And I think it's going to be a good foundation for us and look forward to completing.
Thank you, trustee Wiegand. Trustee Ken.
Well, I appreciated the four days that we had together, two days just for the trustees, but the other two days with staff to get the staff's perspective on this. You know, strategic plans need to be kind of short, they need to be kind of focused. You know, big picture kind of thing, you don't need to get into, you know, digging out every little meaning of a single word to some degree. I like the way it's worded, I like the way that we grouped some of these about community centered relationships, physical responsibility and accountability. I even appreciated your, you know, the categories of growing responsibly, cultivating and nurture community spaces, foster economic vibrancy. I think we went through a long process with that strategic plan where where we threw something out and then we thought about it. And I, I'm so proud of my fellow trustees and the work that they did. And I'm so proud of the staff pitching in and offering their perspective. I don't think there's much to be changed. I have a preference for the vision statement. You're one of those, but.
On our way, yeah.
Okay, I'm okay with with how both of them are worded, but I have one preference over none. So for me, I think this could be approved by an expert. I, I, I don't see, I don't want to open up another can of worms just to dive back into something, get moving, it's been four solid days. And I, and I'm sorry that trustee Teets missed that one day, but I'm glad she was able to participate and be part of that conversation and come in and and raise some good, good points that got included in this plan.
Awesome. Well, thank you, trustee Ken. I, like, well, like I said, you guys really did a great job of getting, getting everybody's ideas out there and getting this kind of fleshed out. Certainly, I would not be opposed to, if if the board wants to massage the language under the community centered piece, I, I would not be opposed to maybe somehow putting, putting all voices in there, but I, but I do think we had a discussion very specifically on ensuring that our underrepresented members of the community also were, that we had some special emphasis on reaching out to those folks. So I, I, I would not necessarily want to see that removed, but I think maybe we could massage that a little bit with, you know, we really want to make sure that all voices are represented, but we want to take the extra step to reach out with folks that aren't, aren't speaking with us. Other than that, I really do think you guys did a great job here. And I, there's really not a whole lot I would change. I also have a preference on the vision statement, but we'll get to that, so.
Any other thoughts? Want to go back to?
Let me just, I hesitate to offer this without having a quick conversation with my colleagues here, but trustee Teets, I think, you know, you make a great point there about the guiding principles and the definitions within. I, I feel you all were quite clear about the titles and sort of that piece of it. And so one thing I would offer is that in the plan for next week, we could just have the titles and know that those four things are things that you want to commit to. And then that way you're not approving the actual definition. And then you all maybe with the staff team, do a little bit more of the massaging around the language underneath them. So to offer that up as an option that keeps things moving forward and maybe not too, not too quickly, also you can be thoughtful about. It's enough.
So lacking a discussion, which, which Lisa and I, as we always bounce off each other with Sarah too, is somebody may be at next week's meeting and need to be hearing what it is that you might mean by these things. And so that's my only hesitation is really talking about with, with just a really, not small, it's important, but an adjustment, I, I hesitate to have you present this as a full approval without sort of defining what it is that you mean by those words. That's some of the work we did, but let's let that sit for a second and then go vision. Are you okay with that? It feels like.
Do we have any comments from the staff over?
Yeah.
Surely they have some comments. Opinions, opinions.
About this topic or all the?
About what we have just discussed.
The just now, okay.
The community centered definition?
No, any of it.
Any of the definitions in the, the plan itself.
So you guys, we don't want to leave you out, okay?
I have a curiosity question. I'm curious, under ensure strong town operations, how, and I'll listen to the experts, how communities or if communities embed sort of that daily operations piece in in a strategic plan, because I get that that it is this higher level task, but then it's, you know, it's eighty-five percent of, you know, half the times daily is just how we get through our everyday.
Yeah.
And so I, I noticed that like daily is not in there or and, but I, I get that it's not necessarily the place for it, so I just don't know how that gets, how that gets wrapped in into a strategic planning effort.
I mean, I would say there are, there are various ways to answer that exact question. One thing to think about is the extent to which you want all of your employees to really see themselves in the strategic plan. So that person that really is keeping the daily, daily running. And, you know, some folks, when they think of strategic planning, they say it doesn't, that's okay. We don't, that person doesn't need to see themselves. When we had some conversations with you, we heard differently. We heard we do want folks who work for the town, even volunteers, we want people to see themselves. And so in this, we've, we've tried to find a little bit of a happy medium. I think what you're getting at is a, is a very real question that happens all the time in the strategic planning realm of how deep do we go? Do we just say to folks, oh, and also all the daily work? Yeah, and by the way. And by the way, everything else that actually keeps the trend turning on the trap. So I'll tell you, I mean, it's the university and our campus, it is just the, oh yeah, of course, all of the things are going to continue to happen that happen every day. I, I heard from you, what we heard from you all, maybe a little, you would like to see just a little bit more of the daily work in this, so.
And I, I just, I'd noted like under grow responsibly, the first, I don't know what we're calling the, the four or five strategic areas, yeah. Under the grow responsibly strategic area, there's practically maintain. And I was just surprised that wasn't necessarily in strong town operations.
That was an example of one that spans multiple categories. And to go back to your question, Megan, in thinking about how does this affect day-to-day operations? I really see it in a couple of the bullets. One is investing in and retaining skilled staff. You know, in our roles as managers and our roles as colleagues. Every, you know, every interaction speaks to that every single day. As well as the relationships piece and then the staff efficiency. I don't remember that the exact phrase, process improvement was used in any of these conversations, but to me, I really felt that ethos woven throughout this conversation of, you know, we're always looking at what we're doing and always thinking about how we can do it better and, and not necessarily let's do more with less kind of attitude, but like what is, let's have a thoughtful conversation about priorities. And if we want to start adding something, what are we willing to not do? And I was really impressed with the conversations that you all had in those areas.
I did see, so I, I, I hear you Megan, because that's something I think about a lot. And I've done a little bit of research and found a couple towns, towns, small cities, strategic plans where they have a strategic plan document on the website, but they also have like these graphics of, you know, administration, these are their normal daily tasks. It is eighty-eight percent of their job responsibilities, public works, these are their daily tasks. This is ninety-two percent of their responsibilities. So, I mean, that's something that I'm looking at and maybe we can craft something to put together just as a, just as a shout out to our, to our, our employees that are, that do the day-to-day and making sure that they feel like they're part of this whole strategic plan and part of the town operations.
If I could add, the principles, I mean, we're in a situation where we'll have to redefine these principles. I get these are great at a community level, but the things that we need in order to maintain the right kind of operations are determination, resilience, resourcefulness, attendance, creativity, expertise, a lot of other kind of principles, and maybe that's a sub-principle. But we'll need to kind of add some more into this in order to make it understandable for folks that this is all great, community centered, but that's a hard thing to translate to daily operations or weekly or even annual operations.
Yeah, and this is also the whole of, of, of the approach to the, the plan and where we want the, the, this, this, the, the plan itself and the trustees' space is right where you have it. And then it'll be the job of the senior executive staff at the, at the town to sometimes dive a little bit deeper on what does this mean for us and have those kinds of conversations with your staff? What does community centered mean for you? You might be surprised, my, they're like, Anna means this, you know, that kind of thing, and it actually does exist for them from all, all the different aspects of your community. So there is that also strategy, thinking about how do we, how do we as a staff embrace this and, and live this? That, that can, can be driven by some of this too. Fabulous.
Thank you, trustee Wiegand.
What else? Anything?
I'm grateful for Megan asking that question because I did put that as one of my notes. Was the, the plan as a whole felt like it was not so much focused, that it was more broad. And it felt like there was some administrative tasks that were wound into, into it that if you look at the pyramid that you showed us on what trustees do, what administration is supposed to be doing and items like that. Some of these line items in here is I've been told that we, so trustees don't hire the staff, nor should we be checking in with Patty to ensure that she's investing, retaining and hiring skilled staff.
investing, retaining and hiring skilled staff. It's been kind of my explanation that that is the town administrators forte. So I think there was some steps in here where I was just a bit confused because it did sound like we took trustees roles and town staff roles and kind of mushed them together where it might make sense in a broad picture, but when you'd come down to it, it was my understanding that the strategic plan should be more hyper-focused on the next two years of what we were doing, what, what us as trustees were kind of hoping to achieve from the resident feedback. And then taking town staff's input and them saying, no, you're crazy. We can't accomplish that in two years. No, I don't think any of the town staff would tell us we were crazy. But so I was just a little confused on how the document was written when it came to the approach and current status.
I'm going to do my best, trustee teeths. I think what you're asking is really important to have in a conversation. Your role in a governing body is to ensure that there is opportunity to invest in, retain and hire skilled staff. That you're providing the mechanisms through your budget approval, your allocation of funds, your alignment with all of those things driving to give your profession and staff teams, the tools they need to do these things. And so earlier Megan asked a question about the daily. And does this, these things around this operational agenda in the strategic plan show up often in other towns? I think I want to link these two comments together because there is a movement towards assuring and ensuring, and you guys got it. You, you were like awe on top of it to make sure that you have a highly functioning administrative core and staff and other things in order to enable your town to thrive and, and, and become better on the daily as you've driven through your strategic plan. And so it is a bit of a twist from a standpoint of how we think about strategy anymore that we do have to name and call out and talk about operations. It's not your responsibility to do the do, that's the what that's going to come for you, but you should be asking, hey, Patty, what are we doing to ensure these things are happening? Right? And so that is in your purview. Not to come up with the how, but to say, how, how are we measuring that? And how can we see that you're doing that kind of thing? So I'm going to pause there and because I think it's all important and it's just, it's a movement that you guys created on your own in the four days that we were there to, to have it surfaced. We weren't going to force feed you this idea of thinking about putting something in around operations. You all cultivated that together. So it was, it was a good move. All right.
It was a great explanation.
And, and when I think of, when I think of operations, I don't think that is as a strategic level, you know, and the strategic plan is, is, is that vision is the mission is the guiding principles and the values and such like it's, it's, it says, this is who we are. This is what we stand for. You know, I look at the invest in retain and hire skilled staff. If we as trustees are doing our jobs, just like you said, then, then we're going to make sure that, that if the administration and staff says, you know, we're running up against this, we need a second planner or we need another engineer. We need somebody that heads up back on the right development and we want to get the best person we get. It was up to us to take that, weigh that against all these other options and then come up with, with a budget amount that could hire that person you need and also retaining people. That's, that's when you start budgeting, how much? What about pay increases? What about the cost delivery increases and so forth? How, how are we doing this? What kind of opportunities, training budget are we giving our, our, our employees? I mean, that is how you retain staff, you know? And, and then you hire people and people want, what they want to come to work here. We've got some great staff. We've got some, a great team. So that's our job as trustees is to, is to do that. But as far as the day-to-day, the operations, a lot of that operation stuff is, is just the routine. You know, you, we, we've got to review plans where we've got to pave the streets. We've got to snowplow. We've got to fix that broken water pipe, irrigation pipe at the park, you know, all those things that have got to be done and they're going to be done. And we're going to be done because people care and they're professionals about what they're doing. So I'm rambling now.
I was gonna thank you, trustee Megan. As we, I really enjoyed the process that this went through collaboratively and all the good things have been said. I agree with. One of the things that jumped out at me in this process is we're kind of at a crossroads from where we've been on past strategic plans and efforts and where we're headed. And that, a lot of that comes down to a time horizon. And the past strategic plans were limited to, this is what we want to accomplish in two years. It had some very specific targets that may or may not have been attainable, but they were a very defined two-year period. And this effort has been discussed in terms of this might be a four or five-year effort to align with accomplishing these bigger objectives. And as I reread through the, the draft plan here, a lot of, I'm on page five, just for, for reference. A lot of these bullet points are aspirational in ways that they're going to transcend even the five-year timeline. And these are things that are going to keep going and will have opportunities to come back and revisit it. But I just, I wanted to highlight that that's one, none of these are specific enough that it's going to say, we're done with that. It's intentionally leading to this is something that we're going to keep after and refine and make this better as we move on. So I just wanted to highlight that I think that's really important in the visioning process and where we're headed with this strategic plan.
Thank you, Ms. Ver. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Or staff? Okay. Well, should we dive into vision?
Sure, but super quick bunny trail. I've been so impressed with the deep commitment that all seven of you trustees have to make sure you're hearing your staff and, and what they're, what they're doing and what they're thinking. It's, it's rare. And so thank you for giving us that gift to, to watch that. Cause sometimes we're like, what do you want your, do you want to know what your staff thinks? And they're like, wow, not today. We're going, we're going. We may or may not be going to a place soon that is thinking that way. And so I, it's just lovely. So thank you for that. And thank you for the reminder to ask. So I appreciate that. Are we ready to vision dive a little bit?
I feel like there's some opinions.
Thank you for the sneak peek. So, all right. I wanted to try to remind us all, this is important for me to think about as I'm going to start facilitating this next piece of we talked at a really important space about what did we want from our vision? We, 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 you all looked at your vision and you're like, not really. It, it wasn't quite what you wanted. Now that you had done all this work and what you were dreaming and soaring about with regard to building the best Wellington, you wanted it to be welcoming. You wanted it to be unique. Remember that moment? I think, I think you gifted us that where it was, we need this to be unique. We don't want it looking like every other town's vision statement. So that was really important. We wanted it to be celebrating and or pointing to our history. So you really talked about that, that, that key. We wanted Wellington to look, we, what we wanted Wellington to look like in the future, right? So we were really, this is your dreaming. What, what are we? A vision statement is what do we want Wellington to looking like in the future? And we wanted it shorter and easier to remember and recite, right? The possibility of, of we can get this or at least put it on a piece of paper that we can go, you know, because the, the, your previous vision statement was quite long. So let's go to the next slide. So these are the two vision statements and just a great big thank you to both of the trustees that worked with me on this virtually over, I think we, we threw it through about three or four days of really intense working. I saw some of you in there, the two trustees that were working on it, literally in the middle of the night. And I'm like, I would wake up in the morning. I'm like, oh, they worked through the night. So these are the two options based on looking at all of the work that the three groups did. And I'm going to just read it to you. And I'm, I'm going to ask you just to kind of listen at this and use, use our listening ears that are, we are gifted. Option A, welcome to Wellington where deep rooted values and a rich heritage unite to forge paths that honor our past, ignite a legacy of unity and create a welcoming community for all. Option B, welcome to Wellington where deep rooted family values and rich heritage unite to forge paths that honor our past, ignited legacy of unity, create a welcoming community for all, brimming with tightly knit connections ringing through our storied streets. Perfect. All right. Now that we've listened, do you remember the exercise that we did that? This is good. I can, I can, I'm sorry, I can live with it? Or absolutely not. Remember, I cannot live with this. And so what I'm going to do is take us through and, and trustee teeths, you're going to have to give me thumbs up sideways down in a verbal way. So, because I can't see you. So work with me there if you could.
Sounds good.
Very awesome. So let's start with, and we're passing no judgment at this point. We're going to get a tally. I'm going to ask you to hold it so that my colleagues here can help me sort of manage what, what's happening. And so let's do option A. I like it. I can live with it. I can't.
Quick question on that.
Please.
Like option A, you, you, I like it, but maybe with a little bit of tweaking.
We're going to have that conversation next. We're just trying to see.
Go on a thumbs up?
We're going to try to, that would be sort of a sideways, right? Because I'm, I'm, I can live with it, but you may be asking for some things there, right? Okay. So that's exactly where I'm at. Okay. So that thumbs up and two sideways. Interesting here. So thank you for that.
I'm not even voting on.
I'm actually not asking staff. This is really a work of, of, of the board of trustees where it should land. I appreciate the feedback, but thank you. I did. I did. Thank you. Option B, thumbs up. I can live with it. I can't live with it.
I can live with it.
So we have two, I can live with it and the rest thumbs down. Trustee teeths. With, go ahead. She could live with it. Right. So I just wanted her to know that we had four thumbs down because I'm not sure if you can see that room. So on option one, we had four thumbs up and two of you could live with it. On option two, we had four thumbs down and two of you could live with it. I propose to you that we focus on option A because you have the majority of you and, and the quorum up, thumbs up. And let's talk about the, anything that you'd like to see tweaked or managed. Are we okay with that approach? Okay? Okay. Trustee teeths with that approach?
Absolutely. Okay. If I can just take a moment, if you don't mind. Since I was the one that was able to work with trustee Moyer on this, this was actually so much fun. And trustee Moyer and I did spend long nights messaging each other back and forth. And we really enjoyed being able to do this. And honestly, this took, once we found the, the general wording, we, we knew that one of these two is specifically described and trustee Moyer had an awesome story for why we added the storied streets to the background. So I did want to give her a kudos for that. She has no, she knows some things about our storied streets here in Wellington that I was not aware of. And I've lived here for many, many, many years. So I just, I was honored to be able to get to work with her on this. And so I'm very grateful that we got to have this experience together.
I agree.
There is consensus with your partner here. So all right. So we're going to take option B off this table. We are going to talk about option A. So four of you said, good. We're, we're solid. Two of you, which I don't remember who, so it's not my job to remember who is, it said, I can live with it. Now, sometimes living with it is okay. And, but if there is anything urgent that you'd like to bring up about an adjustment or some concern or any of those things, I'm going to open the floor. Brian, do you want to run? Sorry, trustee. Sorry. I apologize for that.
You're, you're good. I, I was going to throw it over to trustee Weegan. I think you were one of the ones that would.
The only thing, I thought the second one was just a little bit too wordy, even though it did sound really good. You're a better English person than I am. But I was thinking on option A and good, bad or indifferent, this is what I thought. Ending it for a brighter future, just bringing that into it where it really doesn't talk about what we're doing for the future or how that just expands it just a little bit, maybe?
Can I, I'm not going to respond to that right now, but I want to respond to option B. Your communications people will get both of these options. There may be some ways to use these, these really, these, they worked hard off of your hard work. There might be really important ways of using some of this language to carry it forward in some communication. Like I got super excited when I was seeing stuff going up on the wall that second day. And I'm like, this is communications people need to just grab this. So we've got pictures of everything for them to have and, and to hold and to expand on because you all did some great work there. So I just wanted to make that. So none of this has to die. You just have to pick the thing that you're gonna, that you're gonna vote for.
I mean, I could be option A is plenty good. I just thought that might add just a little bit to it.
So now I'm going to address that. Vision implies for the future in strategic plans. So it's implied. So just wanted to just throw that out there for you. So when you're visioning something, you're visioning this as your future. It's a lot of companies, organizations, governments see it as their future.
Some of us are not that smart to see.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Something that was discussed.
And they talked about it. I saw this rolling through both of them. And I think that was sort of the discussion I saw in the comments section going on.
That was the only thing that I thought about. I might need, but yeah, that's what.
Yeah.
Well, and we have the ignite a legacy of unity. So that's like projecting, I feel like just well, peek into our brains.
Come on, it's the Olympic season. Doesn't that bring like passion to you ignite when they carry the torch? The only thing that I had recommended to option A was the adjustment where it says, welcome to Wellington where deep rooted values. The only other suggestion that I think I had made was the family. So welcome to Wellington where deep rooted family values and a rich heritage unite to forge paths that honor our past, ignite a legacy of union, create a welcoming community for all. I know family was a big word that we had discussed when we were doing all of our, I called it word vomit. So where we were dropping oodles of things that Wellington meant to us on that whiteboard. So, and I know family was one that was talked about a lot.
In good and bad ways, which we had that discussion too.
Yeah, I would hearken it back to what Lisa was talking about before with the word transparency. Family and the linkage of family values meant different things for different people. And there was not consensus about that. And so I just wanted to remind you of that as well.
Of the word family?
Yeah.
We talked about this.
Yeah. Just to remember the definition of family. Sometimes I think the discussion I'm trying, I'm not giving you what I think. I'm trying to remember and hearken.
It was being exclusionary and having different interpretations of that word either be met with negative connotations or creating an uncomfortable feeling of. or uh creating an uncomfortable feeling of unwelcoming vibes, for lack of better words, for people who may identify as something other than traditional.
But that's the kudos to it is family is however you define it.
Absolutely, but that's not the interpretation that everyone is going to have.
I have a couple of comments. I was a sideways.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I have the reason why I was, uh, I can live with this is, and I gasped when you said this earlier. It's the last line of option B is simply poetic.
Uh huh.
Brimming with tightly knit connections ringing through our storied streets. That is beautiful and unique and is a, if you were to talk about a vision, that is a visual interpretation of exactly what Wellington is. I have to make that as a note as to why I couldn't go all in on option one, because that's beautiful. And as we were talking before, it's like, why isn't our vision, our vision, we don't want it to be like every other town's vision talking about. Some of the things that we're talking about, but with better um vocabulary, in my opinion, that's more Wellington-esque in the in the top one. But that last line of that one between that and I know uh, the mayor's group, we were talking about the phrase of blazing trails. We love that. As soon as that was said out loud, we were just like, we're trailblazers. That's what we are. That's what we'll be in the future. And that's something I was really holding on to because I loved that too, because that gave me a vision of Wellington as well now and in the future. So I I just wanted to kind of go back to that whole point of we would love for our vision to be so unique and different that you couldn't slap it on another small town somewhere and be like, oh, yeah, that's their vision. No, this is our vision. Um, so that's, that's what I wanted to point out. But I think option A represents what we want to see in the future. Absolutely. Um, I I specifically prefer option A because the absence of the word family, based on our conversation that we had and the perspectives that we heard that were outside of what I would have thought about when reading the word. And I wanted to respect and acknowledge. Um, and then the um unity and a community for all, I think that really also reiterates some of those concepts and make sure that we're incredibly inclusive and welcoming. So I like option A. I'm all in on that. I just wanted to make that point about I would love for us to do something poetic and amazing and unique. I think we have an opportunity, but I also think the option A represents poetic, so. My feedback.
Thank you, trustee Gait.
What other thoughts? Also, my kid had an accident at home, so I may or may not run. I'm waiting on a decision.
I hate those.
Trustee Cannon?
Well, first of all, I I didn't know which two trustees were working together, and I appreciate all the work that trustee Moyer and trustee uh Teets did on this. The back and forth, it looks like you guys gave this technical thought. I never thought of that last line as being poetic. Until you, until you said.
You're not easy at all.
I, I agree with Rebecca, but option A does cover this. I, I, I would not wanna see family values in there because I recall the discussion that you had and and about the definition of that. And most of you know about my family and sometimes our values might be a little different than maybe more of a traditional set of values. But the values are important to every person and every and every family out there. I think option A uh is highly representative of us, and I think it's it's beautifully worded. And it's easy to memorize and recite without having to become Walt Whitman or something.
But we have a Walt Whitman. So I'm, I'm hearing not a friendly amendment to option A, but a really an emphasis and really um leaning on Patty to take this brimming with tightly knit connections ringing through our storied streets and see if we can blow that up somehow. Not blow it up, but.
Yeah.
Blow it up.
And trailblazers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I love it.
So there's really something to be done there, I think, from creative minds, not unlike mine, not unlike mine, unlike mine, because I don't the communications folks and and you all, uh, from your passions that can be moved forward. So I am hearing that um we are satisfied, if not in support of of option A being your vision statement.
Yes.
Can I just make a comment really quick?
I would love that.
Thanks. Um, I'll try to keep it simple. Um, so when we came to option A, we were like, that's it, we got it. But there were a couple of things that both of us had that we were really like passionate about. And so option B became option A with those two things. Um, and I think, I mean, not to like throw a wrench in things, but there is an opportunity to weave some of B into A and replace maybe some of it, not to go back and rework it again, because it was a lot, but um but I think that that line to me does capture us perfectly. And that's why I was passionate about it. Um. I don't know. With a little work, it could happen.
I wanna hear about the storied streets.
I feel like that. I don't know if I can say that in a public label.
Oh, you totally can. I thought it was fascinating.
We do have.
Someone who was sponsored by candy bars and Cody and I actually heard this story at one of our um, at the Main Streets Construction Project Town Hall thing. So get with me later, trustee Cannon.
You might have to tell me twice, though, because I don't.
I will. I'll try not to be too poetic.
I do think there's space here too for saying the vision is the vision and there's a lot of meat underneath it, right? There's a lot of other things that I think Sarah was saying, we'll give all of this language and wording to you all that um descriptions about it, ways you talk about, you know, events that you have, stories that you tell about the town. Um, when you're. So yeah, a tagline, whatever that looks like. There's a lot of opportunity to use some of the other words here in other places. Um, that keep the vision still kind of clean and simple and how we're talking about it without losing, as Sarah said, without losing some of the poetry and some of the other things that um that you all really have thought through. So it doesn't have to be an either or. And you do want some clarity and simplicity a little bit in your vision.
I'm okay with how option A is worded now. The only thing I would say is if we do look at adjusting it to give unfortunate credit to the word blaze. That word, I know we had discussed that can bring good emotions or bad emotions, considering how much of Colorado is actually burning right now. So that was one of the things where I discussed, I was part of, and I was a resident during one of the fires up in Red Feather. And you hear the word blaze and it strikes a different chord with some people who were evacuated and lost large percentages of property. So that was just my my caution around that word blaze, I guess, especially now considering everything else that's going on.
Um, and our concession to that was forge past.
Yes, yep.
Doing.
Yeah. Well, and you all are being extremely thoughtful about what words um, may or may not mean to different minds and voices and and humans in your town. And so I think you've done a really good job at figuring that out. And you're gonna hear a little bit, right? Because you'll be, you'll hear from people, you get it. And they'll be like, what's that word forge mean? You know, that kind of thing. And so that'll, you'll have to work through that. And that might be when you revisit in the in the year that we're recommending, that you you revisit your vision again and say, did it, did it get us where we needed? And are we still on the mission? You know, that's what you do on your yearly review. And you don't forget all these conversations. Um, you need to memorialize them, which they are in record and recording and things like that. So you can revisit that. Okay. All right. Thank you. I agree. Cool. We're ready to move on?
Sure.
Okay. I think we're done. I don't know. Are we done? I mean, I mean, we're not done done. You have work to do next week, but um I feel like we've had a really solid conversation about all the nooks and crannies. There is gonna be some Wellingtonizing of it that you're gonna need to do, but in 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 spirit and honoring the strategic planning process. You guys are ready to approve something next week. Go ahead.
I have a question. It kind of gets back to what staff was talking about earlier. We started talking about those strategic directions. Uh, Megan, you brought this up, that, you know, about the dignity thing. Undergrow responsibility. I look at that. This has been the only thing in there that stuck out to me. The first one, undergrow responsibly is proactively maintain and improve the developed streets and the built environment. Um, I'm just wondering if that should fit down in sure strong town operations. Just that top line. Yeah, just that top line, just moving down to ensure strong um town operations. Yeah.
There's a lot of things already in ensure strong town operations. So I would and I understand that that's obviously connected to that and it makes a lot of sense. But I think not just visually, but to make sure that we're providing focus on all of those subcategories as much as to highlight it, maybe in a separate category brings more awareness to it. Because it's, it really, I think, does impact all of them.
As I recall, the context of this was really focused on water and linking water to growth and permits and things. Um, and then that led into a conversation about other physical infrastructure needed um for growing and thinking about um streets, fire, police, those kinds of things.
Yeah, the kind of things that are like welcoming to good growth. Like if those are implemented, then we are capable of growing.
Responsibly.
Responsibly, but but also are very much part of strong town operation. But that's why I can see them split in that as number one, undergrow responsibility responsibly, for example, is like the town highlighted item in that section.
Yeah, remember Lisa shared that some of these, remember the whole things we were moving them around? And like, you could theoretically move a lot of these into a lot of different places. I think you wanted them there because of the making sure you had the the things you needed as you were moving forward and deciding to. Okay, we have a new school here. Now we need this, you know, that kind of thing. So um, sorry, schools aren't your responsibility per se, but you you get what I mean. So.
Again, I was simply asking the.
I think that's a good one.
But I'm okay with leaving it there.
Right. What this conversation has done is giving you the tools to say this is why it's here. It can be in other places too, but you as leaders of this community can say, yeah, we thought about that or it's here, but it also can be um contemplated in these other places. We're aware of that.
Did we want to address her question about um the all freezing and safe? That she brought up in the beginning.
Trustee Teets, can you guide us? Do you feel like you're in a place of thumbs up or sideways with regard to the conversation that we did have around? Um, sorry, I'm a little discombobulated.
No, you're fine. What she's talking about is um community centered, where it's actively seeking the underrepresented or missing voices, voices to help inform decisions. I think that you guys explained why that was in there. Well, I I just think people reading it may may take that a different way and assume that we're gonna be hyper focused on underrepresented or missing voices because all voices is not listed. I I would feel more comfortable with saying actively seeking all voices in our community. I I can go either way. So whatever you guys choose, I'm fine with. I just while we say we're providing a safe space for all, we don't say we're actively seeking all voices to help inform decisions. So that I just, that's what I was pointing out there. Um it, there can be an additive in it where all and focusing on underrepresented or missing. I just wanna make sure that all is encompassed in seeking voices.
Is that not implied in community centered as the
main? No, I didn't read it as implied. I just, that community centered, yes, that's, that's the like major bullet, that's the bullet point. But then when it's go, when you go on and you read it and it's explained, it doesn't say all, it says actively seeking underrepresented or missing voices. So that, that's my only feedback on that section of it.
Uh, trustee Teets, I absolutely hear you on the difference. And when we got into the conversation about what it meant to be community engaged, right? There was a lot of that, like we are reaching out to folks that are not coming to us. So I'm here, I'm definitely hearing the difference between the first part of that phrase where it says all community members and the second part, we're actively seeking. And I think we can probably come back with just a little bit of a nuance that hits at what you you're talking about there about the seeking is all and also um, underrepresented.
Yes, let us work on that in our, in our final proposed, I would think we can get to it.
Yeah, and that was the only thing is, is I just wanna make sure that all the community knows. But we were, are also actively seeking the underrepresented or missing voices as well. Just something that encompasses it all. And that's why I suggested all instead of adding the additional words, because really, truly I hear from so many in the community regularly. And they, they don't attend meetings, they won't attend meetings, they have baseball, softball on Tuesday nights and family time. And so I think actively seeking all, because that means we'll be looking when we are focusing on this strategic plan. We absolutely want to be actively seeking everyone's input. So I think that's the reason why it's important to have here is it helps guide where the staff goes as well in seeking all voices.
And um, so we'll, we'll play with a little bit and come back. And and also I'll say to you with the folks that you're talking about who aren't making it to the meetings, those to me are underrepresented voices that are missing, right? They're missing voices. And so that your outreach to them and communication with them is this, it's that, it's a missing voice because they can't make the meeting times, et cetera. So and I'm definitely hearing you. So I think we'll come back with a little tweak that encompasses both of those. I'm gonna get out my verbs sheet.
See what we can do. Yeah, all right. Good. Um, any other last closing comments, please?
I think it's very important that it says community center. Um, we, we touched on that earlier. It's it's super essential that we consider all gathering spaces, not just those for recreation purposes. So I, to me, it's very important that it stays community center. And I think we talked through that a lot, so whether it's a library or, you know, or places to just be together, as you talked about. It doesn't, it's not necessarily, you know, just for recreation.
Perfect.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay. We appreciate you. Back to you, Brian. Okay, trustee. I apologize immensely there.
Thank you guys for coming out. And uh, you know, certainly we, I think the entire board here appreciates what you guys, what you guys have done for us over the last couple of months. So uh, look forward to the board getting this all together and make some final, finalizing this and uh getting that. Really appreciate trustee Moyer and trustee Teets for working on that.
You're here.
Um, other than that, I think we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night.
Good night.